We are back up live. If we could get everybody back in here.
Dr. Ortiz?
No, 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 no.
Yes, you are.
We're back in the air, my friends. So, at this point in time, we have staff sharing with the body some language that they So we'll wait for a second for the language being crafted to be shared with everybody. And then we'll go ahead and after that, we'll have City Manager invite our legal staff to give us a briefing on what just occurred. For those of you that are watching at home, we're just coming back from a recess. We have had a request from one of the council members to take a look at the word existing with regards to the half cent sales tax. There is an interest in trying to see how we could eliminate that word so that other roads and projects that may not be as complete as to the expectations of our community residents, so that those things could be added on to on the road. So we had a recess. Our legal staff and our staff has recessed to talk about that language. And City Manager, I turn it on to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, what we did was, what you have before you in a nutshell is taking what was originally being proposed by us for the three-quarter cent, and we basically substituted three-quarter. We put half in place of three-quarter. So this language should look familiar to you. This is a language that we presented a number of times to you, but it had a three-quarter cent. I'll let Lisa go ahead and read through it specifically, but that's really what you're looking at. You're looking at the language we proposed in the past regarding three-quarter cent, and we struck three-quarter and put half. So, Lisa?
Okay, so the ballot language would read, shall the city of Topeka levy an additional retailer's sales tax in the amount of 5/10 of 1% to be used exclusively for costs of maintenance and improvements of existing city streets, gutters, curbs, sidewalks, alleys, and street lighting. Number two, widening of existing streets, including the addition of gutters, curbs, sidewalks, and street lighting. And then number three, all associated infrastructure within the public right-of-way necessary for completion of the improvements identified in numbers one and two, provided such tax shall take effect on October 1st, 2019, and expire on October 1st, 2029.
So, body, we have the language in front of us. Councilwoman Ortiz.
What I ask for is existing to be removed, and it's still in here.
One of the things that we looked at, Councilwoman Ortiz, was the fact that to try and craft some specific language to address that in the short time we had at tonight is, was difficult. This accomplishes what you requested, because that's what we were looking at doing with the three-quarter, and that's why we were looking at addressing the three-quarter percent, adding in these additional things, so that you could be able to do the improvements that you're asking for related to sidewalks, to be able to do curb and gutter, to be able to do the other items that you're saying you want to see to be able to be considered in your neighborhood. This is a language that allows us to do that. So it's a lot more words, but it is accomplishing what you requested. And we've vetted this language already with legal staff in previous, that's why we brought it forward, and then, you know, in the past. So we feel comfortable, this is the right language that if we put before the commissioner of elections and had it added to the ballot, that we know this language has been vetted inaccurate.
So you're saying if you come and down my street, which has no sidewalks, curbs, or gutters, and they redo it, then we can put street... I don't get it, because it's saying improvements of existing city streets.
Right. So if you look at number two, it states the widening of existing streets, including the addition of dirt, gutters, curbs, sidewalks.
Oh, okay, including the addition. There we go.
So that's the difference that we end up seeing as a result of it. There are, you know, at some point, I would, Mayor, at some point, I would like Dr. Peak to address what would it be the impact related to our PCI goals the council set if we approved this, because I think that's important as we look at this language instead.
Okay.
And then, if I may?
Yes.
Half cents. Your ballot language has said with three-quarter cent tax, that's correct?
That's basically what we're...
Well, draw one.
Yes, that's what you're looking at.
Right. That should be struck, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I think next was Deputy Mayor, then it was Councilwoman Clear.
I will yield to Mrs. Clear, because my questions were actually for Dr. Peak, who is in the pipeline as we speak, I understand.
Perfect. Councilwoman Clear.
Hey, I'm concerned, if I was going to the, to vote, and this was the ballot, and I say, shall the city of Topeka levy an additional retailer's tax? I'm going to, I'm going to think now there's addition, there's more than what the one, I'm thinking now it's 1%, or, I mean, why do we have to say an additional? Because it's not additional. It's, it's instead of the one that ran out, right? Or extend. Instead of additional.
Because it's an addition to the base? Councilmember Clear, you have to use the word additional? It's additional to the base sales tax?
Well, can we say something like, the last one has expired? I don't know. I, I, that scares me. I would go and say, ooh, heck no, I don't want an additional sales tax. That's just me.
That's one. This language was from the county one, too? Yeah, it was similar to the county one was, as far as when we add additional to the imposition of a tax. So it's, it's what we need to do in order to, and also you look at when the information, you look at the bottom as far as the date when it takes effect and when it expires.
Yes, but I wouldn't get that far. I'd stop at additional and say, nope. Just me.
Okay.
Just a quick comment on that.
Deputy Mayor.
This is why branding is so, 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 so important, because we have to have the language in there that states that to be legal, and so people have to be able to look at the first little bit of that and know exactly what they're signing up for. Branding.
Councilwoman Lesser?
The only thing I would add, and whatever the bodies wish, you know, obviously we would vote on that. The only other thing that it seems to me that I would want to point out is, you know, keeping clear with what the intent was of the tax in the past, which was exactly as it was written, for the, for the cost of maintenance and improvements of existing streets, gutters, et cetera, et cetera. Contrary to what our normal street program is, where funds are used to build new streets, to add new gutters, add new curbs. So I'm just making a point of clarification that there are two separate programs, two separate intents. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Clear? And then we'll call Dr. Peak.
Okay, sorry, I got an idea. So could we put, shall the city of Topeka levy an additional 0.5% to the base of realtor sales tax? And you put the base on there, so they can add it up? Does anybody care about this but me? Okay. Am I, like, off-base here?
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Clear, I think you raise a good point, that we don't want there to be confusion of people thinking, oh, it's another half. And I don't know really what the parameters are, what you can have on a ballot, but there's no way just to say, shall the city of Topeka extend the existing... You can't do that. It has to be...
It's additional to the base.
Okay.
Well, extend the addition to the base.
I guess we're all gonna be out walking the streets this summer, educating people.
Okay, Councilwoman Lesser, and then City Manager.
I think, I think the problem with that, and Lisa, you tell me if I'm wrong, I think the problem is, when this thing expires, there isn't anything to extend. It's over.
Correct.
And so you have to then use the language of, whatever the base is, it's gotta be as additional. Is that correct?
We'll be voting a year before it expires.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Emerson.
We'll be, thank you, Mayor. We'll be voting a year before it expires, though.
And Sandra, I do appreciate what you're saying, what you're doing, clarification, and I do get that. I do think, though, most people do understand, I think, what we are doing. I think, I think, I think that there's been a good job of public education of what it is. I don't think that there, you know, for the most part, any, any people who aren't understanding what we're trying to accomplish. I do appreciate what you're saying, and that was kind of my intent of the snow as well, was I just want people to know what they're voting for and understanding. I think, my personal opinion is, I think they do get this, though, but I do share your same concern.
City Manager?
Yes, and what I would say is, even if we looked at, say, an additional quarter, quarter percent in two years, the language would be the same. You would have to say, an additional retailer's tax. I mean, it's, because it relates to what we already have existing. This is an additional amount. And so even if we were to look at that two years from now, the start of this ballot language would be similar.
City Manager, would it be possible to call Dr. Peak?
Yes, if that'd be appropriate at this point, I would appreciate the opportunity for Dr. Peak to make some comments.
Sure. Thank you, governing body. Just, as City Manager and City Attorney said, you know, this language was put together to give us flexibility to add enhancements to existing streets. And, you know, we will do whatever the will of the governing body is, but when I tell you, for the two years I've been here, I've heard, fix our streets. Right? I mean, that's what you hear, that's what I hear. When are you gonna fix my street? I know fix is broad and means a lot to different people, but in the engineering world, the maintenance world, which a lot of people don't get excited about maintenance, I do. I love to share that passion with you. It's about maintaining our streets. I just would say, from a professional standpoint, those guardrails on that existing language have helped us make progress. We'll do whatever the governing body wants, but I think it's important to just kind of remember, if your goal, and it has been in the past two budgets, to set a PCI target, it's important to have those guardrails to keep all of us focused on that target. And just, just wanted to share that with you, but like I said, we're happy to do whatever the will of the governing body is. So, thank you.
So, Dr. Peak, since you're standing there, I do want to make a few remarks. So first of all, I want to say thank you, because you have, first and foremost, for years, when Councilman Jensen and I, Deputy Mayor Jensen and I, came onto the body as pups, one of the things that we started asking for, first and foremost, was, and I remember that was one of my first very intense meetings with Nikki Lee, was, what's the total number? And she looked at me, and she said, we don't have the total number right now. And it was a different project, but we were talking about, what's the total number? And then at one point in time, I started pushing, what's the total number for projects? And then afterwards, Deputy Mayor started saying, what's the whole plan? And for years, this body has talked about, what are the things that we could deal with, what we have in front of us? And for the first time, you have given us the advantage of having a completely non-political way of taking a look at what the condition of our roads are, and saying, this is what we have, and if what you want, because what's what the community is telling us, is that you want to see this much progress in 10 years' time, you need to invest three-quarters of a cent in the future in order for us to accomplish what you want us to have. Now, what happens when you're in the world of being a community steward, is that you understand what staff is sharing with you, but at the same time, you have to balance these things with what our constituents are saying. And as all of us know, there was a really big divide with regards to what our constituents were asking for. I went to several NIAs, and it was very interesting, Councilwoman Cohen and I were just sharing, the NIAs that I visited were all pro, saying, let's increase it, just hurry up and do something positive and fix my street. I heard from Councilwoman Ortiz's side, where's our sidewalks? Why didn't we widen the street? Which again is why, when I was hearing this from the public, my, the constituents that I spoke with were saying, yes, let's do the three-quarter sales tax. And when the polling came out, it said, yes, it would potentially pass. Now, we kept on hearing from other council members that were doing the same work that we were doing, and we started hearing the opposite. And I think that everybody in this body, and I think that the public has to understand the great body that you have in your council, because I think that everybody understands that our staff is right. Make no mistake, Dr. Peak did not lie to us. We need a three-quarter sales tax, an increase of one-quarter to get everything that we want accomplished. But here's the deal, we have to listen to our people and our community, and our community said, we think that three-quarter is too much. And at this point in time, the staff came back and said, we'll do one-half. What I will caution the body as we're taking a look at this, is let's go back to the policy, and let's not let emotions rule how we're making this decision. We set a goal as a body to increase the road condition to a 70% PCI if possible. It's a 70% PCI if possible. Now, if I were to have a magic wand and have all the money in the world, I would absolutely go ahead, because I was, I was advocating in the community that it'd be great for us to fix the sidewalks and the gutters, because I want that. Constituents were asking for that. But at this point in time, we are in a budget constraint. So as we move forward, I want to thank the staff, because it seems like we're kind of getting to, like, we're gonna vote. I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes the amazing work that Dr. Peak and his staff have done in compiling all of the information that they have, and in giving us proper numbers and a history of what's gonna happen in the future, because we've never had that before. So thank you very much, Dr. Peak.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dr. Peak, you're now the credential Dr. Peak, which is excellent, by the way, congratulations. So as you think back to the previous ballot language with our guardrails, as you've started working on some of those projects, how often have you run into a case where we needed to put in sidewalks or guttering or that sort of thing, where we were simply unable to do it because we weren't able to use any other revenue source to complete the project? Has there been a time when we just, we just really had no other options? I mean, outside of us choosing not to do it as part of the capital improvement plan?
I know, sir, what I'd tell you, I mean, it's just, it's kind of the complexity on the backend when we do the CIP projects, and kind of what you saw is, we may have a project that has half-cent funds, we're bringing in infill sidewalk, complete streets money, utility funds, and so there are multiple project funding sources that we're assembling to accomplish that objective, but then at the same time, there are streets that we are just solely doing maintenance on to kind of reach that PCI. But I'd say, we try to figure out a way to meet, we have the infill sidewalk plan that kind of prioritizes where we're doing sidewalks. We use that in the funding source to do that, so...
So you're using your budgetary flexibility to accomplish what we're trying to put into the ballot language anyway? So I'm wondering, you know, obviously it would be nice to have the flexibility to do whatever you want, but given what you're trying to accomplish, do you really need this to meet the needs of the folks over there?
Well, we will continue to operate and align those, those plans with the budget funds that you give us to accomplish the multiple objectives you've given us. Improve pavement condition, increase mobility throughout the city, and we have a number of master plans to do that. But the short answer is, we won't add sidewalks to all the streets or curb and gutter, but within the CIP, you review those projects as well and have input through that process.
And what I'm getting at is, you wouldn't anyway, even with this new, more flexible ballot. Is that correct?
So, I mean, even with the three-quarter cent language that we were proposing with that increased funding, the overarching goal was pavement management, and it would give us the flexibility if the council felt strongly on this project, we needed to do more, we would have the flexibility to use those funds to do that.
But if we really want to do the project, we could just geo-bond it to any...
We could geo-bond, we could look at transportation alternative grants, federal funds. I mean, it just makes it more complex in the funding package, but there are other, other means to get at the same objective, I guess, if that's where you're going.
Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Peak, and this is kind of maybe also what Councilor Deputy Mayor Jensen was saying, does adding this in here, does that complicate the job you're trying to do, or does that help you by giving you flexibility?
So as I started my conversation, if we're going for a half cent, the guardrails are important, and that existing language is important. I think adding this flexibility makes it harder to achieve the objective you want without the additional funding.
Okay. Thank you for that. I remember when we, I think, I think it was when we passed the PCI program, I remember at some point, I told you that, you know, that would be great as long as successive, you know, as long as we stand by the program. You know, you put together an entire program and outlined what we're gonna do, and there's always a temptation, I think, for all of us to, you know, we maybe want a certain thing on our project or something, and much as I would love that, I just, that's unfair to you guys to not give your resources and then want all these things done. So I would actually be in favor of the prior language myself, to give us, to give you those guardrails. So, thank you.
Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of along the same lines as Councilman Emerson, I want to congratulate you and your staff for holding true to the intent of what you started, and what I hear from my constituents are, you're doing a good job, stick with the plan, and keep it going, and don't get sidetracked. So I would be supportive of the previous language and not the newest language. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Clear.
I usually, 99% of the time, go with staff. However, I just remember, since I've been on the council, at least two times, that something has come up, and we said, oh dang, we can't use that, because that has that language in there. And I always thought, oh, and I thought we even talked about, we've got to make sure we change that language. And I can't quote when it happened, but I'm really concerned that at one time, we really wanted to change it, and now we don't. But in the same, along the same line, if you have this new language, that doesn't mean you, I mean, what does that really make you do that you, you can't do with the guardrails?
So I think it makes, like I said, the guardrails keep us focused, as Councilman Emerson, we have a plan, we've talked about this...
Why would this run the plan?
Because every time we come back to you and talk about CIP, and if you have constituents that say, I want this, and I want that, then there's a discussion on every one of those projects, and then if we all come to consensus and agree, we're gonna add sidewalks, we're gonna add curb and gutter, we're gonna do storm sewer on this street, that takes away from that budget goal of reaching the PCI.
But if we all agreed, what would it matter?
So 10 years from now, when I'm in front of you, and you're still complaining about, why hasn't our PCI streets increased?
You say because you wanted...
And I don't want to be in that position, right? I mean, I think...
Because you told me to do this.
No, Mayor, I'd never say that. I just would say that, as a professional and focusing on maintenance, I think that language helps us all stay true to the program, the plan that we lay out. But as I said, I mean, it's ultimately your decision, and what you want us to do, we'll do that.
So if I come to you, and I want a street done in North Topeka now, you're gonna find other funding, because you can't use half-cent sales tax?
That's what, I mean, that's what part of that CIP discussion is, and we have, you know, we have lots of competing needs. We have fire stations, we have equipment, police vehicles. So that's the balancing act of the CIP. We try to make our best recommendation based on the plans you've approved that come out of planning for transportation, mobility, coordination with our utility department, that's one thing we're not talking about, but just, we have a much better process internally of kind of overlaying all these competing demands and elevating those projects that achieve those consensus goals that you've given us. And I just, I'll say it one more time, those guardrails really help us stay there without the increased funding.
And you do a good job. Thank you. Thank you.
I will say that not everybody's as popular as Councilwoman Ortiz, and in four years, this body may look completely different, except for her. And, no, in all seriousness, I think that we have to be very considerate of the fact that we're not making policy for today. We're making policy that it's gonna be 10 years, and we don't know which of us is gonna be here. You know, I don't like to say somebody getting run by a truck, God bless all of you, somebody wins the Lotto and decides that, that they want to move to an exotic island, you know, in Bali or something like that, or Puerto Rico, and that you guys are not gonna be here. We have to make sure that the language that we have today is consistent, so that in five years, when maybe some of us are not here, there is no question with regards to how the money is going to be used, and that the plan that we had for that PCI of 70 is still happening, because there's no question with regards to how we're gonna use that.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. And I hear you. I hear you. I just hope, you know, the main thing that you said was, fix our streets. In East Topeka, District 3, we want our fixed streets fixed, too. But we have to pay for something we don't get, and you need to hear that loud, loud and clear, you know, and that's, that's a concern of mine. To me, to ask for the quarter cent sales tax, we got a one-time shot at this, just one time. That's it. It's either gonna make it or break it. And I know, this is what really bothers me, and this is why, this is, a couple of things why this language is so important to me. Number one, we're paying for something that we don't get. Number two, we've poured a lot of money in streets, because we don't have the money. This, this is what, this is a way that everybody pays for it, so we'll have the money. So to say, well, you know, we're just gonna go ahead and fix your little street, and we'll find some money, there is no money. That's why we're asking to extend this. This is it. I understand it might slow process down, it may or may not. I, I don't know that. You know, I understand that we've gotten together a plan, I get that, but you've got a plan with my money that I, that you want me to spend, but I don't get nothing out of it. That's not fair. That's not fair to constituents throughout the whole city that don't have a street, that don't have curbs, that don't have gutters. You know, what I hear is, they care more about one side of town than they do this side of town. What I hear is, we, you know, and, and I sit here, because I'm happy for them, we got better alleys that are paved than we do in East Topeka on some of those streets. That's the bottom line. And we're continuously checking off, we're continuously saying, let's do that, let's pour that in there, let's do, and they don't have, they don't have good streets over there. So that's why I sit so hard, and that's why I fight, and I hope not to be here in another four years. But, but, but I, but I, that's why it's so important to me, Jason, not to fight staff, but we'll figure it out, and that's why I fight hard, is because they're, they're due. You want me to pay the bills, but I get nothing. That's, that's not fair.
Councilwoman Hillard and Councilwoman Clear.
I just want to follow up with some of what Dr. Peak said, and that is, to remember, for those of us that are in neighborhoods that are underdeveloped or that have, that are older than some of the other ones, our predecessors in the council, oh gosh, maybe 15 years ago now, set aside $1.4 million a year in bonded money to be targeted in the SORT program, goes round robin through our, our neighborhoods that are missing some of those amenities, to do catch-up. And those neighborhoods, when they compete for it and get it, can choose what improvements that they want to make. A lot of cities don't do that. It's something that, you know, I'm really proud of for us, and then we also did, as he mentioned, when the first sales tax came in, said, woo, we've got some gaps here, let's, let's give a little something on the side. And so we put the infill sidewalk program in, it's just, what, $125,000 a year, but so that if there's sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalk gap, sidewalk, sidewalk, they had some money to draw from and fill in that gap, so a sidewalk went all the way down the street. And similarly, that, what, what Dr. Peak referred to as the complete streets money is very flexible, and it's $200,000 a year, I think, something like that, 100?
Don't remember right off the top of my head.
Anyway, it's in there, because we knew that there'd be small things just to complete a street if there was a gap, a number, a sequence of blocks. And, and the staff has gotten better and better, sort of seamlessly, knowing where they can, where they can dip in to get, to get a project completed. in to get, to get a, a project completed. To their credit, part of keeping the guardrails on is if somebody is wanting to do an expansion, the staff has been very, very faithful in terms of looking at what the dollar value would have been on that street to just maintain and improve, and so if we sandwich money, they've been very careful to not draw somebody else's street money out of the, out of our half-cent sales tax money, we've augmented it with other sources, as he said, grants or perhaps bonding, and we do go through that in CIP, so it's not like it's been impossible. We've all gotten more comfortable with how that flex goes and how to look for money if there's a project somebody has in mind, but certainly in Oakland and in North Topeka recently, and, and still on deck to improve, and it's not like it's not happening, but it does happen slowly, 'cause we made that commitment, hopefully in 10 years, to get all the streets people can see today, at least, maintained, and maybe once we, these 10 years have gone fast, you know, if 10 more years, I mean, we would only be putting a half-cent in instead of three-quarter cent, so we've still got, got some magic to, to run, to manage to get to 60 PCI, which is that minimum goal that this number is looking at. 70 is our preferred goal, 60, and so, we're gonna have to really put some things together to see if we can get close to that if we stay at the half-cent. So, it just, we that represent the neighborhoods that need a little bit more typically look a little harder under the rocks to find money, but the, and the staff has been really good about that, I appreciate it.
City Manager, and then Councilwoman Cleary.
I'm, I'm gonna turn that on. Councilwoman Ortiz, I went back and looked at the maps that were presented by Dr. Peak in the past, and you look at where projects were completed, and you have had some completed in your district, and I look at it, and it doesn't look like as many. If you look at the projected map that Dr. Peak created as well for, during his major presentation that he did, there are a lot of your streets that will be addressed, a tremendous number. It, it's a large number that will be addressed in your district, if you, if he follows the plan as he's got it laid out. So, that is something that I think is positive from the standpoint of, yes, there weren't as many that were done in this initial phase, there were some, but as you look going forward with this next round of 10 years, there will be a number of projects addressed in your neighborhood.
And, and I appreciate that, but we'll only get what we have now, right?
So, Councilwoman Cleary, Councilwoman Lesser.
But, but, hold on, I'm, I'm not saying that nothing has been done, I'm just saying, we, we want what everybody else gets, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying, City Manager. You know, when you can, I hear this almost daily, how many times is Wannamaker gonna get tore up and put back together? How many times? That's what I hear daily. How many times are they gonna get a sidewalk put in, zigzagged in, pulled out, put back in? It's been done three times, and we don't have one, we don't, we don't have a sidewalk, or we don't, we don't have, we don't have as good a streets as Wannamaker, you know, and so that's what I hear from my constituents, that's what I hear. It's, it's, it's not, and I let them know, their streets, gonna, it's gonna get done, go on the L Streets, those streets are terrible, we're gonna take a ride, we're gonna take a ride, 'cause they're, they're terrible, and I keep asking, when are they due to be slated to get done, but it floods on Sixth Street, it's because of our piping, I mean, anyway.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cleary, then Councilwoman Lesser.
I wanna make sure I understand, most of this money will go to the projects in the CIP?
Yes, that's, that's where the predominant, I mean, there are, there are two personnel positions funded through this position, and we do use some of the expenses for commodities for transportation operations, for asphalt patching, of those things, when we have the added language that we won't use it for snow removal expenses, but the predominant share of the money goes to the CIP.
Okay. And what I tell my constituents is, once, once our little street can bring in the money that people bring in on Wannamaker, that's when we'll get it done.
Councilwoman Lesser.
The, the only other thing I would point out, 'cause fundamentally, you know, what I, what part of the argument is, you know, is we're paying for this and we're not getting this, and, and I appreciate that, and I, I understand that. I don't think there's a way, though, that, that, that we can have the, the perfect language that, that incorporates and eliminates that, you know, from the standpoint of, of, you know, you know, where I live, you know, or where Padilla lives, some of those areas, there's alleys on here, we don't have alleys in those parts of town. So the same argument could be made is, I'm paying taxes for things that are on here that, that, that I don't get. You know, new developments where special assessments are done, you know, I'm paying, you know, you know, in, in a new, one of the newer subdivisions over in, in Mr. Mays' area, you know, those streets and curbs and gutters are paid for by special assessments that are assessed to those homeowners that are buying in there. So their argument then could be, you know, I'm paying for, for, for things that I'm not giving. So, I just don't know that there's a way to solve that, i- is what my point is, because that argument can be made on, on both sides of it, and I just say that, just for sake of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I will call the question.
Okay, so at this point in time, if there's nobody that opposes, the question is being called, so that we could determine whether we use the language that adds?
Ma'am, there was no motion for that.
Oh, there was no motion?
You can't call a motion.
I didn't recall a motion.
No, there was, there was not a motion, because we were waiting on the language so that we could make a motion.
I have to do a blotch.
Okay, so, then we have a motion to include the language that would add sidewalks and additional maintenance to the roads, do we have a second for that motion? With a lack of a second, the motion dies. So at this point in time, the motion that we do have in front of us is to pass the language that was presented to us with the words existing for a half-cent sales tax to be renewed for the City of Topeka. I'm sorry?
Could I read the?
Yes, please.
Would you like me to read the ballot language?
Yes, please.
Just to make sure that we're all on the same track. Shall the City of Topeka levy an additional retailer's sales tax in the amount of 5/10 of 1% to be used exclusively for costs of maintenance and improvements of existing city streets, gutters, curbs, sidewalks, alleys, and street lighting, provided such tax shall take effect on October 1st, 2019, and expire on October 1st, 2029?
Is that your motion, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a second for that motion? Councilwoman Cleary, so we have a motion, and we have a second, I'm sorry?
You already had a motion and a second.
We had a motion and a second, oh my gosh, I am so sorry.
I know, it's been a long time ago.
It's been, I know. So we have a motion, and we have a second, and at this point, if there's, Councilwoman Hiller?
Just wanna clarify that this has been amended once, and so it's the resolution, not just the language, we're approving this resolution as amended earlier.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, with that clarification, I guess we proceed with the voting.
We have eight yes, Ms. Ortiz and Mr. Cohen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point, we proceed with the announcement, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two announcements quickly, we have a coffee on the corner regarding a sign and building design update tomorrow, Wednesday, July 18th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Lori's Short Stop, which is 101A Northeast Highway 124. And also, I wanted to bring up, relative to our, our hands-only CPR video that we posted, has had over 6,400 views since it was posted last week, with 86% of those viewers being from Kansas, so, good news, the word's getting out there, people are looking at it, so.
Well, I would first like to say thank you to Deputy Mayor for yet again covering for me as I was in the island of Puerto Rico, and I wanted to say thank you to the people of the, of the island that greeted me so warmly, and just to report back to the people of the City of Topeka that there's great need over there. One of the requests that I had from one of the senators in Puerto Rico was, he was asking if, if the City of Topeka would partner so that we can send school supplies for 200 kids, because there's places in the city of Umacao, and that's like towards the east side, I know that I'm speaking Chinese here, but it's like towards the east side of the island that the kids are still very affected, there's families that, when I was landing in the island, it was very heartbreaking, because you're landing and you see all the blue tarps, and if you recall, while I was there, Hurricane Barrel that became a tropical depression passed, and it was roaring all night. So these families that were already challenged were even more so, more people lost their power yet again, and people that are starting to rebuild their lives are, are really struggling. So, if you are interested in talking with me, I have a list of the school supplies that they're asking for, it's simple things, like 200 backpacks is what we're trying to accumulate, notebooks and crayons, and just basic things that are not gonna be too big, but I think that that would be a cute love offering from the City of Topeka, if we could support this and, and maybe get that to the City of Umacao to tell Miguel Laureano that has made that request of us. Thank you, I, I saw how you started the meeting, I think that you did make less mistakes than you did last time.
But does he get a cookie?
That's right.
That's Amber, who's, who's gonna give him the cookie? So I hope, so Councilwoman Padilla suffice with the cookie. I, I do want to acknowledge somebody very special, and that City Manager, we, when we started the announcement of the plaza, Evergy and Capital Federal have jointly provided $5 million, my friends, $5 million is a lot of money for the development of the plaza, and I had not seen City Manager show up, so I did see Councilman Mays, and I made fun with him when I called him up, and I was privileged to have Councilwoman Hiller, because that's her district, and Councilman Padilla, who was there, but I did not see the City Manager, and I did not pull him up, and we're a team, and I wanna just reiterate in the public that we really have an amazing team and a good thing going on, this city is very blessed to have the staff that we have, but we're all excited, and I know that it's, it's weird because I do work at Evergy, but the fact that they gave $2.5 million was huge, and Cap Fed always stepping up, Cap Fed is true blue to our community, so, huge thanks to that. Next week, I finished my travel, the City of Topeka has been selected to be a part of the Harvard Bloomberg Leadership Program, and not only will I be able to participate of that, but one of the bigger benefits is that two of our staff members are gonna go, City Manager is one of those, and Nicoli is the other staff member. The journey begins, and that begins next week, I have been since Sunday reading nonstop, yay to school, but I'm super excited, because this is a great opportunity for our community to receive resources, and we were one of 40 selected from the world. We're going to be in the company of individuals from Mozambique, Africa, from Canada, from Quito, Ecuador, Reykjavik, and, I mean, so it's, it's just a huge, huge event, and we're very blessed and thankful to the Bloomberg Foundation and to Harvard University for putting this program together and for including us. So, with that, Councilwoman Cleary.
Brendan, good job, Abby had that tap. I know you're getting tired of hearing about it, so we do have a cap. The pastor that was here tonight, along with Pastor Clarence Bullock's of the New Hope Community Baptist Church, is putting on a movie in the park Friday, the 20th, at the Oakland Community Center Park, and free refreshments, it begins at 6:30, and they'll be showing War Room, so bring your lawn chairs and blankets. And as I mentioned last week, the duck race, I now have a Tope- Tope- Topeka City Council team, so if you go to the Great Topeka Duck Race, you can buy the ducks for our team, 'cause we don't wanna look like the team with zero ducks. Thank you in advance.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Quiet. You know, I'm sitting here thinking, this is probably, if we could do something like this, Mayor, call it Operation Puerto Rico, and have people team up with like Staples or Office Max, and the reason why I say that, or Walmart, and have them buy tickets, because they'll do all the shipping for free. And what happens so many times is, you know, Topeka is a giving city, and so if we can coordinate something like that, or I'll even help you, 'cause you know, I love kids.
Yes.
But so many times, you know, with Katrina, they filled up three big, um, three big trucks, and they had three big trailers out at Walmart, and guess what, when we got ready to take it, there was nowhere to take it down there, because they don't, they didn't have anywhere, and they end up, all the supplies, you know, they would get moldy and all of that, so, and I, what happened was, they gave the mission two trucks, and then they sent the other truck to Salona, so they still went to a good cause, but it's always important to, to remember that, when they tried to get Detroit some water, they had all these people dropping off all these waters, and it caused more money to, to, to transport it, but if we buy from those entities, and they'll, and we can get them and pair up with them to ship them, and then what we could do is buy tickets, so, you know, they'll give us like a thing, and, and then they keep tracking, and then they'll send them over, so I'll help you coordinate that.
Please, thank you.
But Operation Puerto Rico is underway.
Yes.
The kids need school supplies, and I look for Henderson Construction to write me a check for $150, I'll take it tonight, thank you.
Councilmember?
Henderson? Thank you, Mayor. Like the Miss Ortiz, I, I used to love kids, and I had four of them, and, no, I'm not so certain, no, they, they won't watch this. Our Topeka Golden Giants, our local team, are in the championship of, actually, I don't know what their league is called, summer collegiate ball club, they got kids there from Worsburn, from K-State, all over, they're a fantastic thing, and tomorrow night, they start the first championship game at 7:00 o'clock at Lake Shawnee, so it'd be great to have a lot of people there in the stands, I mean, they have a great following, and you can see my son, the world's tallest bat boy.
Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank City Manager for coming down to the Mexican Fiesta, had the opportunity to host him and his wife Kelly, and get, get them to see some of the artwork that they have down there on display, and met the artist, and it was a nice, a nice turnout, we had very hot weather, which is traditional for the Fiesta, if it would be this week, we'd even have double crowds, but I wanna thank the community for showing up and enjoying themselves and showing support for that 85-year-old tradition, that's all I have, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So I will be happy to match Henderson Construction up to the first $10. I think it's a great cause, I'll be happy to contribute to that, and as soon as I get the webpage load, I'll have one of those quacktastic ducks. So, two other quick things, yesterday was my wedding anniversary, I have no idea how long I've been married, but I just, the little thing on my calendar says, you've been married. So, happy anniversary to my lovely bride, we had a wonderful weekend together, and also I'm obligated to give a shout-out to the gals at Positive Connections, where I left my backpack today, and I discovered this wonderful heart of giant microbes, so if anybody would like syphilis, or some other inappropriate things, apparently I have lovely squishy versions of them, hooray. In, in all jest, though, those folks do amazing work over there to try and bring awareness to what are very serious diseases, and, so we laugh about all these little stuff things, which I'll be sending to my wife's clinic where they can actually be of use, it is a big issue in our community, and they do great work to try and help folks manage the terrible diseases that are out there. Have a great week, everybody.
Councilman Mays had no comments, Councilman Cohen?
Can't follow syphilis, fleshies, yeah, thank you.
Councilman Lesser?
You can give my donation to Mr. Emerson there. Real quick, I just wanted to give a congratulations to Seaman High School, eight-time state championship head coach Steve Bushnell, was named ABCA National Coach of the Year, pretty cool deal for, for the capital city, so, congratulations, Coach.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Just a couple of events to give credit to, but first, congrats, Mayor, and thanks for representing our city and getting us hooked up with the Bloomberg, and... for representing our city and getting us hooked up with the Bloomberg and Harvard. That is really great. Harvard, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, same place. Wanted to give some kudos out, following the mayor, to the Downtown Topeka Foundation, and, and then Capital Federal, and Evergi as the donors. That was a fun event, and as I think Matt Pavaric pointed out, as far as anybody who was there knows, is probably the biggest crowd for an announcement that was undisclosed ever. You know, there's just a lot, and the, the comments were great in terms of just the excitement about the trajectory we're on, and, and so that was, that was really fun. I wanted to give a shout-out to the city's, I think it's Water Pollution Control actually doing this, but I got an email just this week, sort of out of the blue for me, that said, "Oh, guess what? You know, we just wanted to let you know that, that the problem with flooding at Fifth and Clay, we've been working on that since last year, since we found out about it, and we're going to actually start some corrective work in a week or so." And that kind of thing, coming back, watching that group get in, and, and the staff following up without any prompting is really awesome, and I appreciate it very much from staff. Further, it came to my attention yesterday, we've been, Sasha and her crew have been working so hard on demolitions, yet we know always, the first thing we tell the owners is, "It's your property, you should take care of it." Yet, we as a council have been contributing as well. A really rundown building in District One, the old bowling alley that many people remember on Sixth Street, was up for what might have been a substantial amount of city dollars. The owner, it did come down last week, and the owner took care of that. So, really pleased to see, I'm proud and pleased for him, and to see those kinds of developments happening as we're continuing to work on that agenda of cleaning up our city. And along those same Public Works kind of lines, for anybody who lives near or travels on Huntington, the gas service company is out in great force getting the gas lines updated, and that's actually a couple of years ahead of our Huntington Street project. So, again, for Public Works and the partners that we have, we're getting some things in sync and, and get some of that utility work done way ahead, which is inconvenient now, but it's going to be really great as we keep rolling. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two individuals signed up for public comment. I don't see Joe in the crowd, but we do have Ms. Carol Marple.
And Audrey Klein. Thank you very much.
All right. With that being said, we do have to adjourn to executive session, if the city attorney would read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters involving a claim against the city and pending issues involving a contractual matter as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Financial and Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Associate City Attorney Nick Jefferson, and myself.
We have heard the parameters. I see Councilwoman Cohen raising his hand for her motion, and I saw Councilwoman Emerson for a second. If we could all proceed with the voting. Once the voting is done, we will recess into executive session, the room will be cleared, and then we will come back once the executive session is done to completely adjourn the meeting. However, we typically don't have any action taken in these sessions.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, we adjourn into executive session. We have come out of executive session, no action has been taken, and at this point, the meeting is adjourned.